Good evening, I'm David Assad, the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, October 15th, 2020. We are meeting at the One Government Center in the Committee Hearing Room pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, Subsection F. I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretary this evening is Brittany Farrier. The lady to my right is recording an audio version and Fall River Government TV, Alex Mello and his staff are recording both a video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Seeing none or hearing none, present this evening are permanent members Jim Corkins, the gentleman to my left, Attorney Carolyn Marasette, Vice Chair, sitting next to Brittany, Dan Dupere, and alternate member Joe Pereira. Brittany, have all petitions to be considered been properly advertised and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48 as amended?
There was a scriven as error on petition number three in the third line that states 237 Miller Street, but it is supposed to be 374 Miller Street, and that was brought back to my attention today. So, just for clarification, it should be 374 Miller Street and the incorrect number is listed.
Okay, but the, as it was advertised and as it's published, it is Eduardo and Maria Ferrera and Maria Barbosa, 499 Stafford Road and 374 Miller Street-
Correct.
-and lots E19, 18, and 115.
Yes.
So sufficient, so under 48, Section 11, I determine that there's been sufficient notice given, that it can be identified and we know what we're talking about. Okay. So, except for that minor scriven as error, we've in compliance there. I declare the October 15th, 2020 scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River, open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including the petitioners, abuddies, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chairman. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this Board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This Board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48 and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments, they're competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petition and after a decision of the Board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office or from the Planning Department. I remind everyone that the Building Inspector is the zoning enforcement authority and you are here this evening because the Building Inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18 mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policies for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning-specific matters at the end of this meeting. There's probably a sign-up sheet in the back of the room if anybody wants to sign up for public input outside of anything that's on the agenda this evening. I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the City Clerk's Office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. I also disclose that the new recodified edition approved by the Planning Board and City Council in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, Section 5, now with its grapefruit red cover, is the official copy. Are there any questions before we begin? Hearing none, we'll start with Agenda Item Number 1, TWH2 LLC, care of Mark Levin Esquire, Robeson Street, Lot M440. It's a variance request to construct a single-family dwelling waiving area requirements in the G District, lot size 4,922 plus or minus square feet. Good evening, Attorney Levin, identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Attorney Mark L. Levin, Law Office at 138 Rock Street, 4 of Mass. I'm here representing my client, the applicant, and she's here, the principal of the company is here with me tonight. This is sort of a sad sack thing. My client finds a lot that's advertised for sale to build a house on it. Before, when we do the title, we wanted to make sure that it was actually a fact-billable lot. So my client goes to Glenn Hathaway, the Building Inspector for the City of Fall River, gives her a letter saying this is a buildable lot, and that was on February 7th, 2019, and then my client buys it on July 19th, 2019. She applies for a building permit with her engineer, they go through the Planning Board who signs off on the building permit, they go to Conservation that signs off on the building permit, they go to the Water Department that signs off the building permit, they go to the Sewer Department that signs off the building permit, they sign, they go to the Engineering Department that signs off the building permit, she goes through Site Plan Review, and on February 19th, 2019, Site Plan Review 19-414 is approved. It then goes to the Building Inspector, waiting, 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 and the letter you see attached dated April 1st, 2020 says, the second paragraph, "This area was done, this decision was done in error, therefore you need to go for a variance." The problem is, she meets every requirement that this zoning requires, but unfortunately she's short 78 square feet of land. It's probably about from there to here that she's short. And with that, without it, it's a useless piece of vacant land that can't do anything with it. I mean, the hardship couldn't be anymore. She relies on the city officials before she even buys it to say that it's a buildable lot, to give her a letter saying this is buildable, and that she would not have bought it had not for the city telling her it looked like it. You know, we did the title, you know, you're never really sure when you're looking at assessors' plan what the dimension is, so we went to the Building Inspector to make sure that it did have the minimum requirements, and he said it did at the time. And so we are left with you to say whether or not this land will stay there for doing nothing forever. I mean, you look on the-
It's in the G District.
It's in the G District?
It meets all the, it meets all-
Everything.
As I look at the plan that's provided, that's stamped by a professional land surveyor, Stephen Roy, it's, the only piece that's missing is that 78 square feet.
That's it.
It has the frontage, it has the minimum front yard, minimum side yards, minimum rear yards, the building height, and the maximum lot coverage, and I think you're showing the building envelope that you're planning on building.
That's what was, that was approved by Site Plan Review by the Planning Board, and everyone-
No, I just want to make sure that there's nothing, but that the only thing that's missing is the 78-
And if you look at the plan, you'll see, everyone's lots are the same lot of the same plan. They all have the same dimensions.
So let's see who's in favor and who's opposed.
Okay.
Members of the Board, any questions? Joe?
Nothing.
Dan? Carolyn? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, so this is how we're gonna go with the opposition. I'm gonna start over here, I'm gonna work my way across. Okay, sir, you can be number one. Will you identify yourself for the record, please?
William M. Nassar. I live at 92922 Robeson Street, and I propose a buildable lot.
Okay.
I've owned that house now for 21 years, but I bought it from my father, who was raised in that house, who his father bought in 19.8.
This is your house?
Correct.
Okay.
I, uh, I have staff from the Florida Police Department, the Mount Vaccines, on Robeson Street, for the past five years, through 757 Robeson, down Bitterell Street, to Pier Street, 235 actions. There's no parking on Robeson Street as it is, and any more buildings in that area would be detrimental to the, to the residence. And, uh, I just feel that you shouldn't be allowed to build a house there.
Thank you, Mr. Nassar. Anybody on the second row, next row?
Hi, my name is Yolanda Young.
Can you say it again, please?
Yolanda Young.
Yes.
I live at 910 Robeson Street-
Yes, ma'am.
-right way across from the hall, and I've only lived there for four years, and in the four years that I've lived there, two vehicles have been destroyed from my family, from cars hitting, and it becomes a rain, so congested. It's so tight, when I pull out, I'm nervous all the time because I have to pull out to the second part of the street, no matter which way I'm going, because they pop on my side of the street. If they have to stop hopping on the other side of the street, my fear is getting hit when I pull out, because I'm gonna have trouble doing the back turn and stuff. I have to rely on the help of my neighbors. If somebody moves across the street, it just becomes more congested, it's more dangerous, and you just get so much traffic going up and down, up and down, and all that else. I just don't see how that would work out, the thing on how the driveway or some state way.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Hi, my name is Mark Hammond, I own 910 Robeson Street, right across the street, and I had two vehicles snatched up. The road isn't wide enough for any more parking on the other side of the street, so I'm moving parks on this side of the street, and there's no more room for cars.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Adam?
Hi, I live at 912 Robeson Street. I own the house on 912 Robeson Street, and, um, like you said, I had vehicles sit outside in front of my house, which time tried to pull out the driveway, um, it's congested, and, uh, that lot would just make it worse.
What's your name, please?
Will we have your name, please, ma'am?
Please?
Your name?
Yolanda Hammond.
Thank you. Okay. Sir, with the O up, yeah?
Bruce Mello.
Yes?
899 Robeson Street.
Yes.
In the last seven years, we've had, myself and my family, we've had four cars total and three with excessive amounts of damage. From Blue Boston Road to Robeson, to Pierce and Robeson, it's all three families, most tenants have two to three cars. Everybody's right, we have nowhere to park. In the winter, it's ridiculous, you're walking a block, two blocks to get to your house. By them building that house, they're gonna cut more curb, it's gonna take away more parking space, and that street is extremely busy in the morning, afternoon, and at night. There is a house next to it with a little bit of peace of mind. They pulled another house today, I don't know where they're gonna pop to, and it's just ridiculous.
Okay. Thank you. Sir? Anything, Devin? Anyone else? Attorney Levin, would you like to address some of those concerns?
Yes, well, as you see on the plan, my client is providing two parking spaces required by the zoning ordinance. I mean, we could actually deepen the parking lot to provide more if somehow they thought that was a help, or to make it a deeper parking lot. There's not much we can do. They, they all have the same sized lot that my client has, just that my client would've never bought this if it wasn't for the Building Inspector giving her a letter saying that it's zoned properly and is a buildable lot. And she went through all the building permit things, including Site Plan Review, that approved it. So, the Site Plan Review is to determine whether or not there were problems with traffic in that area and what would be the proper setback. They had no objection to where the house is set. As you can see, we have 44 feet to the back of the property. I mean, there's no particular reason why it was 13 feet instead of 10 feet off, it was just what was designed. If the Board thinks that that house should be pushed back a little bit for some reason, for more visibility-
The singular issue I see before the Board is strictly the 78 square feet.
That's all it is.
In all respects, you've got-
It meets everything that the Zoning Board does. I mean, I gotta-
I didn't ask any of the abuddies if they have off-street parking.
I get a complete sign-off except for the Building Inspector.
No, no, we've got that, we hear that loud, I hear it loud and clear, I don't know if the other Board members appreciate that. Do you all have, Mr. Nassar, do you have off-street parking? Okay. Mr. Karen, Mrs. Karen, yes? All right, so, you're parking on the street?
We park on the street.
You don't have off-street parking on your lot?
I do have parking.
And you have, you don't?
Okay. Sir, do you have off-street-
Same thing, we can fit two to three cars, but you've got ten, it's-
No, 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 what I'm just asking is whether or not there is off-street parking-
Yes, yes.
Because, okay.
This is just a single family.
No, no, I got it, and you're providing two off-street parking spaces, I got it, but for the seven, I just wanna see-
No.
-how this fits into it, because as a, if but for the 78 square feet, you'd have a conforming lot-
That's correct.
-and this is where we are. Okay. I understand, I understand everyone's concern. Has anyone talked? Listen, this is beyond the purview of the Zoning Board, and I'm sure Mr. Nassar is very familiar with talking to the Traffic Department about that area of Robeson Street, but it's beyond the power of this Board to deal with the traffic, and I, I guess during Site Plan Review, that issue had come up.
Yeah, and they passed it, they approved it on February 19th.
Okay. Okay. Is there anyone else opposed to this petition? All right, Members of the Board, you've heard what we've got before us, we've got a lot that's 78 square feet short of the area, but in all respects, it meets dimensional requirements. So the petitioner is grant a variance so they can build and take care of what had happened, or deny it and leave the, the lot undeveloped. Motion to grant, motion to deny?
I'll make a motion to grant.
Who's that? Joe? Joe Pereira, motion to grant, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Jim Corkins, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Jim Corkins, yes. Joe Pereira, yes. Dan Dupere, yes. Carolyn Marasette, yes. Chairman Assad, yes. That petition is granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number 2, I hope I say it right, Rana Masood, 11171 Bay Street, Lot A 1788. This is a variance request to subdivide 10,615 plus or minus square feet parcel into two lots, leaving an existing two-family dwelling on one lot while constructing a new single-family dwelling on Lot Number 2, 5,500 plus or minus square feet, having previously been granted on December 15th, 2005, and having since expired. What isn't disclosed in this, it's an R8 single-family district. Will you identify yourself for the record, please?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board Members, my name is Dan Agia, I'm the Senior Project Manager at Site Tech Engineering with addresses here in the city, as well as Dartmouth and Rainham. As the Chairman stated, this is a petition on behalf of Rana Masood, who is the potential purchaser of this real estate. The real estate is currently numbered as 1711 Bay Street, it's located at the intersection of Bay Street and Marland Ave. In 2006, a variance was granted to Cliff Costa, which I believe there is a copy of that decision with a vote of 5 to 0 in your, in your package.
It was December 15th, 2005, and then it became final-
Oh, 5, okay, I apologize.
No, I wanna be looking for a 2006 one, that's all.
So, at the time, Mr. Costa, well, a few years later, Mr. Costa sold this property to a William and Renee Reed. During that transaction, they were supplied with this variance decision, showing that they had the ability to construct another lot on the side of, of this newly created lot through the variance. Actually, it was given an assessor's map and lot number as well. After a year or two, going through some health issues, I believe there was actually a medical lien placed on the property and a couple of items, the Reeds decided that they could not construct the home on that parcel. They were now looking to sell the entire parcel, first just the vacant lot itself to try and create some revenue. That's where my client came in, Rana Masood, he came to me wanting to put together a Site Plan Review application to submit to the city. When I did some research, I discovered that, in fact, the variance, although granted and recorded at the registry, had never been followed through with and had expired. So the Reeds purchased the property in 18 unknowingly that they didn't have a variance, but it was supplied to them and presented to them that, that they did, that they had two lots. Well, they don't. That variance had expired, and to be honest with you, they never followed through with the following steps of subdivision, transfer of ownership.
So they didn't do, they didn't do the, because I couldn't find a formally planned-
No, they, they, they thought, well, I'm assuming, or at least the Reeds thought, that the signed decision, because when you read the signed decision as an unknowing homeowner, you think this is my, my golden ticket. You don't know that there are multiple steps to follow this. Maybe Mr. Costa should have, but maybe he didn't. I, I don't know Mr. Costa, I don't know what happened at that point. I just know what was presented to the Reeds and what they had thought they had. So, Mr. Masood comes to me and I explain this to him, I ended up, we ended up getting in touch with, with the Reeds and explained to them the scenario and that we would have to go back through the Zoning Board of Appeals process to get that variance approved again. So the plan that you see submitted by my office, almost identical with one little jog in the real outline. If you look at the original grant, there was one lot that only had 4,561 square feet. Well, it made no sense not to be able to provide at least 5,000 square feet of land, which is the state minimum for a, for a buildable parcel of land without a zoning variance. So the only difference in the two plans is that little kink, so that way 185 could be provided with an additional land area to get above the 5,000 square feet. Parcel 2 would have 54 feet of frontage along Bay Street and consist of 5,500 square feet of land. Parcel 1, where the existing house is, which is located at the corner of this corner lot, pushed way over to one property, and you can see that in the photo that, that I've shown you, will have 80 feet of frontage along Marland, 46 feet along Bay Street, and consist of 5,083 square feet. Both parcels will be able to provide off-street parking. Parking is not really an issue in that area, parking is allowed on Bay Street and Marland, but as you can see, there is an existing parking lot that services the existing two-family dwelling at the corner, and on Parcel 2, the proposed parcel through Site Plan Review will have to provide its own two off-street parking spaces as well. So that's the request before you tonight, is to basically reapprove in a similar fashion what was granted in '06, and what everyone having to do with this real estate, except with me, to, to me, thought that the owners had. With regards to hardship, very similar to the hardship that was, that was presented before the Board back in '05, we have this oversized parcel for the district, it's a corner lot with excessive frontage, had 108 feet along Bay Street, 80 feet along Marland Street, and at one time was actually two separate parcels that had merged upon the zoning change into an R8 district prior to the first zoning decision. So we do have this expansive open side yard area that you see on the plan, but primarily I would propose that the, that the hardship would be financial to the property and to the owner, as they thought they were buying, let's call it, you know, a bank account or some type of insurance, that they had, anytime they needed, they had the ability to sell off this other parcel. Well, that was not true, and they were very surprised to find that out. So we're here this evening to ask the Board to look on that and grant the variance requested similar to that was granted in '05. That's all. If you have any specific questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
I just, did, did you indicate that, are they planning to actually build on that second lot?
Parcel 2, yes.
Or are they doing it for investment? Because you said they'd have an investment that they could-
No.
They can sell it, and that will be money that they could now use. So yes, part of the application is to build a home, parcel, a whole new home on that parcel, too. And something to note is that in this area, you'll see a number of lots that are smaller than the one being proposed. Also very important is that the existing use of the property is not in conformity with the R8 district. There's a two-family home on this parcel, actually a convenience store across the street, a number of multifamilies, and then a number of single families as well. So again, we're not taking a completely conforming condition and making it non-conforming. And if this relief had not been previously granted, I would have advised my client not to appear before the Board.
You've raised all the highlights, you've got the merged lots, you've got the lodge, it's in the R8-
I don't have much else to give you. Yes.
No, no, I mean, it's an R8 district, single-family district, you've got a pre-existing non-conforming. The, the, the building as it exists is skewed to the, to the southeast corner of the lot. Frontage, anyway.
What we, what we did with the proposed frontage was match not only the, the previous variance plan, but also the original lot lines.
No, no, I, I got that, so we're doing that. I mean, I'm sure the Boards has done their research on that also.
And that's why the existing driveway is actually located only through the Marland Street frontage for what was that original parcel, and no driveway off of that.
And the other one is gonna be the Bay Street, Bay Street address. Can you talk a little bit about how the Board should think about 8634?
Well, I, I know this was a discussion at the last meeting, and, and I've looked into it as well. I think when you look at that section of the bylaw solely by itself, I can understand a potential interpretation that you cannot take a conforming parcel of land and make a non-conforming parcel of land out of it. I do, however, believe as you continue to read on through the zoning bylaw and, and Chapter 48, the purpose and intent of the Zoning Board of Appeals is to hear cases and listen to the merits of each individual case to determine if a variance or special permit is warranted and could be applied to a specific situation. So the ability to appear before you, I think, gets us here, which I think the initial representation of the interpretation may have been, you can't even get here. So I, I believe when you read through zoning in 48, I think we clearly have the position that we can get before you to provide our argument. It's up to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that's what this Board is charged with, to hear specific circumstances and cases and hardships and make the determination whether or not a variance or special permit can be granted. That's all I can offer with, with regards to that.
Yeah, I'm just, because I've been struggling with that ever since-
I know you, I know you have, and after the last meeting, I did look into, you know, a number of cases and items, and I'm hoping that the Board has had a chance to let that marinate and sit and think about it a little bit and, and back up and understand the purpose of the Zoning Board of Appeals is strictly to hear matters like this.
But didn't that section pertain to changing from a conforming to non-conforming?
Well, what-
And that, that there's a separate section that, that contains, or pertains to the extension and non-conforming, or-
Right.
-expansion of non-conforming?
And, and I, and I wish I could hang my hat on that interpretation, but when we look at sheer land area, shape, and size, this is a conforming lot to the R8 district. The use of the land is not conforming.
Is non-conforming.
But that's separate from the section that the Chairman is stating. They, when, when they speak in that section, it's solely to, is the lot conforming. Could be a high-rise on it, but does the real estate itself-
Does the lot itself-
-the shape, the dimensions, the area, does that part of it conform? Even if the building setbacks didn't conform-
No, it's the lot.
-I don't think there's a difference. It's, it's the real estate, the geometry of the lot itself. So I, I do think that, that that was a proper interpretation of that.
Okay. Jim? Joe, any questions down there?
Except for historical reference, the variance that was given 14 years ago has no bearing here, correct?
Correct.
No.
Other than, that's what the landowners preceding, the gentleman that got the variance, believed they were purchasing. That's the only thing.
But at that point in time, were there still two different assessor's lot numbers assigned, or at the time the current owner purchased it, was it merged back into a single lot?
Depends where you look. So in 18, my client only, well, sorry, not my client, the client, the current owners only purchased this in 18, so 13 years after the variance was granted. But again, at closing, and shame on their closing attorney, whoever that was, they were presented with, you have a buildable lot on the side of you, here's the decision from the Zoning Board of Appeals, it's recorded at the registry. They don't know enough to say, what was that variance ever acted on? What does that mean to somebody that's buying real estate that doesn't necessarily understand what we all understand? They don't know enough to say, what was that variance ever acted on? What does that mean to somebody that's buying real estate that doesn't necessarily understand what we all understand? I, I find myself in many situations where I walk into an environment that I don't understand what the, fixing a vehicle, for instance, I walk into a garage, I know nothing. So I have to, I can only, I may think that, oh, all you need to do is change the tires and, and the squeal is going to go away. Well, no, there's twelve hundred dollars worth of brakes that, that's squealing. I don't know that because I'm not a mechanic.
But the variance was recorded.
The variance was recorded, but that does not. You, there are other steps you need to follow through with.
No, I understand.
Yes, yes. So the variance was recorded. So even if someone were to take a cursory look as a, as a landowner and say, oh yeah, this is recorded at the registry of deeds, it has to be right. Well, no, you have to follow through with the subdivision process within a year and either convey the parcel to someone else, put in a utility, do something that acts on the variance. The recording of the variance itself does not constitute acting on the variance. So this variance expired December fifteenth, two thousand and six.
Right.
Now everybody understands that.
But I think what I, and, and this is just a matter of reference to the chair, eighty-six thirty-four still stumbles, causes me to stumble at, at this point in time. I mean, it's, looking at the photograph, it's, it's sizable. Looking at the plan, it's sizable. But what are we as a board going to do procedurally in light of, of eighty-six thirty-four? Are we going to look at each one of these separately? Which I'm not completely clear if we can? Or if we're going to blanket eighty-six thirty-four over the lots like this?
No, I.
It's a rhetorical question.
I know, I got it. I, I, I mean, that, that's what I've been struggling with since eighty-six thirty-four was waking me up in the middle of the night, thinking about what we do for, when you have a conforming lot and something happens. If you have a pre-existing non-conforming structure on the lot. And I did, prior to coming to the meeting, I was looking for plans. I was looking for, that they did an application to do water, sewer.
They absolutely did not act on the variance.
No, I was trying to figure some way to do it.
Yep, I wish it was too.
So anyway, that's, but yet, but you're correct. Two thousand and five variance has no bearing on what we're doing this evening.
So that this doesn't continue to happen. And even at the last meeting, I asked that question. These petitions had already been applied for. The deadline had already passed for submission. So this was submitted before we had our last discussion. I, I think the proper thing to do would be to request to get a legal interpretation from inside of the building of what is the proper way to proceed. We think we have differing opinions.
Either that or an appeal if we deny it.
But that, but that's, that's not going to help the next person. I know we always talk about, we always talk about fixing zoning, not just granting variances because it's not fixed. So.
It's, it's a problem that I'm wrestling with. I don't know.
But it's going to continue to happen until there is an answer. Because the, the building inspector should not direct us in the direction of requesting a variance. It should just be.
Well, let's, let's talk about the building inspector. In, in the vacuum, he looks at this and he says, I have a conforming lot. You want to split it into two. It doesn't meet zoning. Forget about eighty-six thirty-four, it just doesn't.
Correct.
So the only relief that you can get is coming to the board to see if the board finds something by way of forty A, section ten, shape, topography, soil condition that gets us there.
Correct.
Except I've got the local ordinance that says, you, it doesn't say you may or you can or think about it.
I, I know you're still saying that we can't even get to that part of forty-eight. I understand.
If you have a conforming lot, I think thirty, eighty, eighty-six thirty-four, the express language, I feel like I'm.
No, I, I remember you, you read it at the last meeting.
No, 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 I just, I just, listen, I play it over and over and over in my head, trying to figure out how I get there. It says no yard or lot existing on the effective date, and I think it was rezoned in sixty-four.
Yep.
So it's been an R-eight since, since that. It wasn't like just a couple of weeks ago. The ordinance from which this chapter is derived shall, shall, it doesn't say may, can, you have discretion, shall be reduced in dimensions or area below the minimum required set forth in this chapter, period. Yards or lots created after such effective date shall meet at least the minimum requirements established by this chapter. So that's.
Right. But to be honest with you, it's missing one sentence. And, and that should be, I mean, clearly, and when, when you read that definition, no substandard lot would have ever been created out of a conforming lot in the city of Fall River.
We talked about that. I mean, I don't know, since.
It's, I've been doing this since nineteen ninety-four, and I know you a few more years other than that, hundreds, hundreds. So.
Thank God they're not precedent-setting.
Well, no, and, and they're not, but that's why I think we need to get an interpretation moving forward. And if that is going to be the interpretation, when someone goes to the building inspector, they should be told, per section this, you, you do not, you are not afforded the right to go before the zoning board of appeals. Other than that, it's going to keep happening.
That's an, and that's a aspect of eighty-six thirty-four that I'm playing with.
Right. Either that should be changed.
No, no, well, well, listen, but the board is not the legislative body to do that.
I understand that. But, but maybe through the legal department that is.
But what's before the board this evening is this particular petition. You've got five members to listen to it. Let's see where we're going to go with it. But I do appreciate, I do appreciate your argument. So anyway, is there anybody here in favor? Look, I asked, we started with Joe. Dan, you have anything? Carolyn?
No.
Jim, you, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. So that's the petition. That's what they want to do. There was a variance that was granted for whatever value you want to attach to it. Motion to grant, motion to deny.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, well, that's, that's what I want to ask, is that there's, you know, does anybody on the board feels that they're in a no man's land, that they need some direction from the legal department in the city hall?
Yes.
And if that's the case, I would request that we, we be allowed to table the matter until such a decision has been rendered.
Okay, so we.
I would move that we table the matter pending legal discussions with the legal department.
Your motion is that we table the matter and we ask for a legal opinion as to eighty-six thirty-four. Is that correct? All right. So that's, that's Jim Clarkin's motion. Do we have a second on Jim's motion to table the matter? And, and send for a legal opinion to the legal department on eighty-six thirty-four?
I'll second.
Who's that? Dan Dupere? Second by Dan Dupere. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those?
Is this to a date certain?
Well, it really can't be to a date certain. You can, you can keep putting it on the agenda.
He will extend it. He will sign his waiver of the hundred days and we can put it on. I guess we can put, next meet, no. Let's put it on for the December meeting.
That's fine. I mean, I'm assuming, I'm, I'm assuming we won't get a decision before the next meeting.
I, I don't, I, I don't know the answer. I'm not, I'm not on the sixth floor that often.
And if, and if it's a December meeting?
So let's put it on for the December meeting and give law department enough time to do what they want to do.
Can I also request that the board waive the tabling fee because of the peculiarities here? However, we will pay the additional advertising fee. We understand that.
Yes.
There's no advertising for?
Oh, there isn't? For a table? Okay. Excellent.
Okay. So Jim's motion, second by Dan Dupere. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Joe, yes. Dan Dupere, yes. Carolyn?
Yes.
Yes. Jim Clarkin's, yes. Chairman aside, yes. Send it up. Let's get an opinion and end it.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Sorry, that took long.
No, no, it's good. It's better that we got it. Everybody watching knows that there's an issue. They know that they have to record despite my five-minute introduction. You still have to record and do other things to protect it, but I guess people still forget about it.
Mr. Chairman, have we got any in the upcoming meeting that we should notify them that it can't be held?
Is there, is there a few?
Well.
November hasn't been.
No, no.
So if, no, so if there are, we'll deal with it because let's get it, let's get the issue settled so we're not wasting time and. So this is agenda item number three. Yes? We ready to go on number three, everyone? Eduardo and Maria Ferreira and Maria Barbosa, four ninety-nine Stafford Road and three seventy-four Miller Street, lot E nineteen eighteen and one fifteen. This is a variance request to modify, to modify the existing interior lot line. Proposed lot E nineteen eighteen, size two thousand three hundred and thirty plus or minus square feet. Proposed lot E nineteen one fifteen, size six thousand seventy-two plus or minus square feet. And pursuant to section eighty-six four twenty-five, a special permit request to construct in addition to the existing non-conforming structure at three seventy-four Miller Street, waiving side yard setback requirements in the BL district. And pursuant to section eighty-six four forty-five, requesting to waive parking, loading requirements in the sixth division one, I guess it's, yeah, VI division one of the bylaws.
That was a mouthful.
It was, but it's okay. So you know what we're doing.
And we're trying to get through this. Again, for the record, Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering have this, here this evening on behalf of Eduardo Ferreira, his wife, and I believe his sister, I think he's here tonight. The petitioners this evening currently operate the kitchen out of the St. John's Club. And for a number of years have wanted to move out on their own, purchase their own building and open up a small restaurant. The real estate that's before you this evening, which they have purchased, is located directly across from Maplewood Park and Ciabatta, at Stafford Road and Miller Street. I grew up only three blocks from here. I did not know where Miller Street was when they first called me with this. There was no Stafford Road, but I couldn't tell you where Miller was. So currently on the property, there is a commercial building. You see in the photograph that I've given you, it was a chiropractic office, Dr. Luongo, for a number of years. And you'll see on the assessors cards that I gave you, actually still have them listed on there. So there's a commercial use on that corner with the parking lot that you see in that photo. Adjacent to it, that same tan color building, there's an existing two-family dwelling. Two parcels, two separate uses, owned by the same people. The parcel that had the, that has the two-family dwelling on it exists with approximately fifty-six hundred square feet of land. And the commercial building currently had six thousand seventy-two square feet. This is in a BL zoning district where five thousand square feet of land would be required for the first unit and fifteen hundred square feet for the second unit. It's a very important number. First, I'd like to, I'd like to point out that the existing two-family sitting on fifty-six hundred ninety-five square feet is a non-conforming parcel. Very important. Non, non-conforming, conforming use because, you know, the multifamily is allowed. But the required area is not achieved currently either. So the owners have purchased this property, came to me, want to convert that existing commercial building into a restaurant. Perfectly allowable by zoning. Not a big deal. What they would like, however, to do is to be able to create some additional parking. So in expansion of the existing front parking lot, as you can see, we've made some changes, some restriping, some handicap spaces in that front area where we can provide seven off-street spaces. Beyond that, we are proposing to construct a driveway to the west of the building, extending to the rear of the building and create an additional three parking spaces. Spending a lot of money to create an additional three parking spaces, however, we know that it is very important to get as many parking spaces for this use as we can. But let's get to the variance portion of, of the petition first. What we would like to do is modify the existing lot line, which is straight. You'll see on the plan, it's labeled existing lot line, which runs right off of the back of the existing medical office building. Basically splits the lot in two somewhat evenly, starting from Stafford Road. So what we would like to do is create a new lot line that you see in bold, wrapping around the two-family dwelling with a minimum setback of four feet to the steps that you can see, five feet to the steps on the side, basically exceeding the building setbacks to the north. So we would technically be no closer to a property line than the existing sideline already. There's an existing concrete sidewalk to the rear of the building. Access to the two-family dwelling would be sufficient. And it is owned by the same petitioner as, as the proposed restaurant. What that would allow us to do is to create that new driveway, new parking area, appropriate sidewalks for access for pedestrians to walk from the rear of the building to the entrance of the restaurant. You see a new proposed concrete sidewalk that we show, wrapping around the building. In addition to that, we are proposing, you'll see, in addition to the rear of the restaurant, sixteen by twenty-eight, which would be a new kitchen, proposing squaring off the front left corner of the building, getting no closer to Miller Street. So no, no requested relief there. And then similarly, a ten-foot by ten-foot entrance foyer area to the east side of the building, again, getting no closer to the minimum, to that minimum setback of Miller Street of the existing structure. The proposed addition would be a minimum of six feet setback to the side, you see, to the newly created lot line and a minimum of twenty-four feet to the abutter to the west, where the side yard is only ten. So we would easily meet that building setback to the, to the existing two-family dwelling at three forty-six. So what we have is a variance request to allow the reduction in lot size and frontage for the two-family. And E nineteen one fifteen would now be ninety-four hundred square feet, far exceeding area and frontage requirements. And the additions to those buildings would fall under a special permit as they are an expansion of the existing non-conforming condition, where we would be getting no closer to any property line than the existing structure itself. And then we get lastly to the special permit with regards to parking. When you read through that section of the bylaw, eighty-six four forty-five, we are allowed to take into account off-street parking and a number of other items for parking for the property. But we did want to create as many as we could on this parcel alone. Directly across the street at Maplewood Park, I'm sure you're all familiar with the, the existing driveways and laneways that provide off-street parking and public parking to anyone in the area. So I think we can easily show that there is ample parking in the neighborhood, just like the downtown restaurants do here where nobody has parking, but everybody finds somewhere to park and can find their way to the restaurant. This would allow the revitalization of this commercial property. You see in the building schematics that, that we've given you, there'll, there'll be some money spent here for sure. And I think it'll be a property that the city can be proud of as well as the proposed new owners. So there are a number of items and maybe different orders that you want to discuss or condition or hopefully approve. But I would gladly answer any individual question. That's probably the way to, to get started, to get through this.
So each lot needs to be five thousand square feet then?
That's the variance, correct.
Right. So for the existing two-family, how much will be there?
They would have, so if you look up at the corner, you'll see new E nineteen eighteen?
Yes.
So, so the proposed lot area would be two thousand three hundred and thirty. Yes, yes, it is small. Correct. Being reduced from fifty-six ninety-five, which is not conforming.
And then the other lot, how that's going to be?
The other lot is now going to be expanded to ninety-four hundred square feet. So.
Isn't there a way you can get five thousand for, I mean?
For?
For the existing two-family?
Well, what, what we can do is if we were to do that, creating the new parking lot to the rear of the building would now have to be done through an easement. And if through an easement, that creates additional liability for, let's say, twenty years from now, the new owner of four ninety-nine, if it ever got sold to anyone, they now have a parking lot with an easement on it. And that just creates an additional liability for, for the owners. We, we were trying to create them as two separate entities so that one didn't rely on the other. Currently, for that two-family, there is no off-street parking. They do park in, in Maplewood Park. As you can see, the parking lot is solely used for the chiropractic office when it was operating. So yes, we, we are reducing, and again, that is the variance, is, is the proposed setbacks and the reduction in land area for E nineteen eighteen.
Anything else, Carolyn?
Uh, no.
All right.
And what we did was we followed along. There, there is an existing retaining wall. You see on just below that, where I have the number four ninety-nine, where we show a concrete sidewalk?
Yes.
That is an existing concrete sidewalk. And the proposed lot line adjacent to it follows a retaining, an existing retaining wall where there is an elevation difference. So we followed that retaining wall.
That was going to be my, my recollection is there's a retaining wall.
Between the parking and that sidewalk. Correct.
They're separate from each other because of that.
When you stand there, it looks like that's where the lot line is.
So the, they're not on one lot, but by analogy, eighty-six four twenty-three subsection B is kind of where we're going. I have a singular lot with two dwell, two buildings on it.
It would have, it would have almost been easier that way. And to be honest with you. you, when they came to me, they thought both properties were on one lot.
No, no, but what I, just to get back to Carolyn's point, because I, I think we're all, I'm looking at it and saying, I want more square footage, but my recollection of going to the Luongo Law Office was you had that retaining wall that separated that two or three-family house from everything else that they had over there. I didn't realize that it went all the way back, so we're taking some land in the back of this to create that parking.
That parking.
So if by analogy, or by looking at it, by saying it was on one lot, we would end up creating this existing two-family on this lot and having this other building on the other one.
Correct.
Because even if I, because my initial thought was coming down south and saying, you've got four parking spaces, but let's get a couple, but you can't because of that drop, that elevation difference over there.
If, just to get the square footage, and you understand that, if you want, I'll show you what they're talking about. And, and we had, we, we spoke about it before. So right now, this area, if we take this lot line, okay, and on paper, this lot line gives this area to this lot number to get that lot, square footage up. We can create an easement that this parking can still happen, but technically the land is owned to this. But the easement can be written in a manner that they can't even use the area, but it gives the board the ability to allow this to happen without a reduction down to that. Everything, the way that it looks on this plan would be the same, except this line would be imaginary.
This is the retaining wall line, is that what that is?
Nope, is, is the retaining wall here that comes here. So this is right behind, so this is the, the backyard right now for the two-family. So if we do this, this, you could still use this for the restaurant, but it would be through an easement. And while you own it all, then you don't even need the easement, but if anything were to ever happen to convey either, then you would want to have the easement created. So if you're okay with that, I would offer to the board that what I would suggest is, if you can see on your plan, see where I have this five-foot jog? If that five-foot line gets extended all the way to the rear property line, whatever area that may be, which should ease.
No, you can make it. I, I, I agree with that. I want to make sure that the board, if that's something that Carolyn or the other board members are concerned about, but I'm, I, I don't, easements just make life miserable for owners.
I know they do, but if.
No, no, I got it.
I can't tell the board how to condition an approval, and I want an approval, so if that's what gets the.
No, I got it, but I want the board to consider that easements are, they're not a clean way of doing things. And if we make the analogy of splitting two buildings on one lot, then this, this, as you've got it shown, could in fact be a, a decision that the board could have made. But, and you've got that physical barrier of that retaining wall that's causing the problem.
And, and the topographic difference, which would be the hardship for not, for following that, that retaining wall.
But that's, that's just my view of what I'm looking at, that's all. We've got four other brains on this board, so.
The, the lot line change and the creation of the easement is basically a cute way to circumvent, it's going to be used the same way it's being proposed here, but there would be additional area on paper, because on a subdivision plan, you don't see anything other than the lot lines. So yes, you would see more area.
Okay. That was my own. Carolyn asked if there's anything else that you'd want to ask Dan to address, make him do it.
I agree, easements are difficult, because the next.
No, no, that's, that's what I'm concerned about, you're gonna.
Go ahead. You know, it is a small lot.
It is, extremely. It is. But the configuration of the lot and how they've developed it caused the problem. All right, well, if you think about it. Joe, any questions down there?
It's not so much a question. What I'm struggling with is, and I agree, the easement is a problem down the line. I, I just, I have a problem creating these tight little lots that just wrap around a house. And I, I guess going to the easement situation and holding on to part of the back property on paper resolves it, but does it really change anything? So it's, it's not even a question. I just hate to see what's drawn here, because I just hate to see these lots cut off, so you just have a few feet around a house in every direction, especially a multifamily house, because now it's not even conducive to a family situation. It, it's, it's a comment. It's, it's not even a question at this point.
Okay. Dan?
Nothing.
No? Jim? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, so we're going to do the same. I'm going to start in the back and I'll, madam, you identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Sandra Lima. I reside in Miller Street in Washington, near my husband. I'm also here with my lady, Elsa Almera, who resides at 346 Miller Street. I've lived in the neighborhood for 16 years.
So your 346 is a direct abutto to the west?
Yeah, I'm right.
Yeah, you're right next door. You, you, that's you, 346?
No, that's me.
No, that's you, you are?
363.
363, okay. Please.
So we lived there for 16, and Elsa's lived there for 12.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm listening.
Okay. So I'm just going to be off my notes, if you don't mind.
I know.
Okay, great. So our first concern is regarding delivery trucks to, and how the establishment is to set up those deliveries. Currently, Miller Street only accommodates for one lane of traffic through off-street parking. On both sides, having delivery trucks stop for an extended period of time will cause barrier for oncoming traffic. So I want to ask the board to consider residential, consider the residential community surrounding the restaurant and regulate the use of Miller Street for deliveries of any kind.
All right, you know that this, that this location is in the local business district?
Correct.
I just, I just want to be clear that it's not, it's not like a single-family residential district, it's a local business district zoned area. So we can deal, we can ask the question about deliveries, time of deliveries. If the board is thinking of granting it, we can limit when that's going to happen.
So does it matter that she resides in a different zone?
Of cour, of course it matters. That's, I just want to make sure that you understand what, where this property is located.
Okay. So moving, so that's a.
That's number one, go ahead.
So our number two is the, obviously, concern for the park, and I know you noted that currently the residents on the, the Robinhausen Park off-street, that is not true. Residents park in the chiropractic parking lot that is currently established. So my concern is if you're cutting off parking to those residents of that structure, where are they going to park? That's, you know, that's a concern that we have. And also, we also have, in addition to that, we have, our concern was that currently there is no notation of employee parking on the proposal. So that is, you know, something we would like to see noted here today. Where are you intending your employees to park?
Okay?
Okay.
Yes?
And then moving forward, we want to.
Take your time, you live there. Let's, let's hear what the concerns are with the neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm just, okay. So our final concern is directed from Elsa. She speaks Portuguese, so do you mind if I just speak on her behalf?
If she says it's okay, it's fine with me.
Yeah. So she's deeply concerned about her privacy. If the rear park, if it is proposed, they granted, and this will present new limitations for her when she is in her backyard. Therefore.
Can I stop you for one minute? I have a question.
Sure.
Not to you, to Dan.
Sure.
Is that a vegetative border around there?
Yes.
It, it, I don't think, it doesn't exist now?
No, no.
Okay.
There is, there is a fence for half the yard, but yes.
No, no, I just, I, on the plan, they're showing these green circles, which I'm reading or understanding to be a vegetative border between her property and that property. I don't think it exists right now, but that's something that I think they're proposing.
So a plan.
I just want to make sure, no, I just want to make sure that somebody had, I'm going to have Mr. Aguirre talk about that, but I wa, I didn't know whether you had seen the plan and saw that vegetative border. Okay.
Currently, there is a fence, there's a legal fence in place. However, we are requesting, maybe the question is, currently, what are you expecting to put there as far as planted?
All right, we're, we're going to get an answer to that. Go ahead, please continue.
And then if, dependent on what is, you know, presented, we would like, she would like the request to be 12 to 14-foot green giant activities to be placed to screen in the ability to her have some privacy for her and her family.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
I lived there for 16 years, so we never had problems, and now we want to have a restaurant near our house, you know?
You don't have it yet.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Anybody, you're pointing, no, this gentleman, yes, sir?
My name is Paul Reed, I live at 330 Miller Street. My grandparents owned 346 until they sold it when they died. My mother and father built the house at 330 in 65, and I've lived there all my life.
Okay.
The majority. And, you know, it just, that's just too small, you know what I mean? You know, this guy's saying, you've got six parking spaces in the front, he says seven. You'd be lucky to get six cars in there. Then you're going to put three more in the back, you know? What's that, nine, nine cars, right? 10 cars.
Yep, seven and three is 10.
Yeah, well, you know, what kind of restaurant are you going to run with 10 cars? You know what I mean? 10 customers. You know, when Ray Luongo owned that place, he was a lawyer, you know, with a lawyer, have three, four clients a day coming in. The chiropractor's daughter, she'd have maybe one every hour, so you're talking, you know, two or three cars in a parking lot. You know, this is, this is, it's just too small, you know? You can't do parking on that street as it is now, because there's a, you can only park on one side, you know what I mean, in the wintertime, so I, I just don't see it. I just don't see the room for it, you know what I mean? And the, the big issue I got, which I don't know if it's, it's going to be addressed today, is the liquor license, you know what I mean?
That's outside of the scope of this board.
All right, okay. But, and, and another question I got is what is actually 374 Miller Street? I've been up and down that street 100 times, and I can't see no buildings on 374. All the buildings that are on that lot are Stafford Road addresses. 499, 501, 503. The chiropractor office has got a mailbox right in front of it. Two mailboxes.
I, I will leave, the, the numbering is from the city ass, city assessor's office in the engineering department. They say that there is a 374 Miller Street, and it's located at this, but that's whether, I don't know whether it's ever been used as that address, but that's how it's identified. I'm going to let Mr. Aguirre address some of those questions in a minute. Please continue with your concerns, sir.
I just, I just don't see the, the room for it, you know? Unless, you know, like you said, they're going to park across the street in, in Maplewood Park.
All right, did you, did you hear, did you hear my initial statement to this young lady, that where this is zoned, it's zoned in a local business district?
So this is, you're saying that's zoned commercial?
It's zoned local business, that they can have the restaurant there as a matter of right.
There's no, there's no qualifying thing on how much room you want to park.
Wait, 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 wait. Very limited issue. Limited issue is the use, can they have a restaurant there? In that BL District, yes, they can have a restaurant. They don't need a variance to conduct that business there. The issue that's before this board is the dimensional requirements that we're talking about. How much space, how much land they're looking to separate, some land, add more land, add parking. That's what's before the board.
I just don't see the room, I don't see.
I got it, I, I hear that loud and clear, and I think the board members hear that loud and clear. Madam, I saw your hand, I'll get back to you in a minute.
Can you answer my question?
Oh, okay. There's a young lady in the back, I, I, no, okay. Dan, you want to answer some of those?
Sure, certainly. As you just stated, this is in a BL District, so the proposed restaurant use is allowed. We're here seeking relief and special permit with regards to items beyond the allowed use. So the, the restaurant part of it, the restaurant's the restaurant. The part of the reason that we're here is so that we can provide additional parking for that restaurant use. We see the need for as much parking as we can provide for this restaurant use, and that's what we've done. There's a lot of construction activity for three off-street parking spaces. However, every space counts, especially when you live in that neighborhood. So that brings us to that. So again, under the special permit provision, parking can be provided in off-street locations, which I think you all believe in as you've driven down that, that area. There is ample parking directly across the street, on the street, in the lot, a number of places. Just as every downtown restaurant, I have an office on, on Purchase Street, I, I find it difficult to park to go to work, but all of the restaurants always have space. And yes, do you have to walk a, a block or two? Do you go to Providence? You might have to block, walk three or four blocks. Maybe you need to get valet parking. So there'd be a number of ways that we'll be able to address the parking demand if it arises or if it does increase. But right now, with the ability to create this many off-street spaces, and then the additional on-street spaces, I think parking will be handled well. Through site plan review, they will look into, okay, do we want employee spaces on the parcel or not? So that type of signage and those things will take place during site plan review of whether or not they feel, if it were me, I would think that the three rear spaces make most sense to have as employee spaces. However, I do not want to get bogged down here and then find site plan review, want something else, and then I have to come back. So right now, we have the ability to create X number of spaces. We'll let the site plan review people decide who they want in each space. So that's with regards to the, the employee parking. Deliveries, we have taken into account and, and looked hard at how deliveries will, will occur here. Absolutely 100% can be conditioned by this board. No parking of delivery vehicles on Miller or Stafford Road. There is ample room in this driveway with the required width of 20 feet, which is what we've proposed, and that's in the bylaw, that we can provide for deliveries. Deliveries can be conditioned certain times of the day, outside of the operation of opening of the restaurant, to make sure that there are no conflicts with parking, either on the street, in the lots, so that way there will be open lanes for any type of deliveries to happen.
Do you have hours of operation?
I think Ed can speak to what, what the hours of operations for the restaurant would be, and then I think we can craft around that.
It would be Monday through Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I'm sorry, Friday would be 9:00 p.m. and Saturday 9:00 p.m. So I'm sorry, Sunday to Thursday is 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Sunday to Thursday?
11:00 a.m.
11:00 a.m.
To 8:00 p.m.
To 8:00 p.m.
And then one hour later on.
Friday and Saturday.
11:00 a.m.
11:00 a.m.
To 9:00 p.m.
To 9:00 p.m. When do you expect deliveries? When your suppliers, do they make deliveries to the restaurant, or are you going to be doing it yourself?
Most of the deliveries we, we do ourselves. So alcohol with the license later on, I don't, I can't answer these questions, I don't know when the deliveries will be, but early in the day, it wouldn't be a 6, 7 o'clock thing.
Do you, well, I don't know.
You can.
Does it have an alcohol, do you already have the?
We, we don't control the alcohol where we already have.
Now, I see your hand, I'm going to get to you in a minute. Good.
We don't.
You don't have, you currently don't have a license.
Correct.
Okay, so, so let's not talk about things you don't have.
What I would propose is that deliveries to occur between the hours of 8 and 11 every day?
A.m.? Yeah. That would be fine.
Not too early, so that we're not bothering residential abutters. No deliveries other than deliveries that are made on the existing driveway or parking lot. It's a little bit of an inconvenience business-wise, however, I think to.
Deliveries in the parking lot, nothing.
No, no, I mean the hours, the hours of delivery.
Yeah, 8 to 11.
Yeah.
And it's going to be in the front, it's not going to be on Miller Street. Oh, I don't know.
Well, they, I mean, there may be a delivery truck that pulls in the driveway, but absolutely no parking of delivery vehicles on either street.
Okay. I got it. Wait one minute, Dan, let me, madam?
So I, I do, I understand the restaurant industry, I've worked in it for 15 years. I can absolutely say that you cannot regulate when deliveries are set, because it's, it's only one-sided. So he's presented on the, the bias of the restaurant, however, your delivery company has schedules to maintain, has an outline of when they have other deliveries to fill, so you can't speak to when deliveries are set due to the fact that it's a one-sided argument.
However, if the board conditions that there's be no deliveries, or deliveries will only be made between 8:00 a.m. and 11:00, and no parking on Miller Street, and no parking on Stafford Road, and must be on the properties, if he can't get it, he's got a problem?
We'll have to go pick it up ourselves.
They'll have to get it themselves, that's.
And those are going to be in a minute?[1771.63]
No, no, if, if the board, if the board grants the conditions that I would, I would hope the board would put in there, is those strict conditions that know, that if there's parking, if it's granted, and there's parking on Miller Street, and it's disturbing you or your next-door neighbor, you're gonna call, you're gonna call the building department or the police and say, hey, we got a problem here. I don't think that, I, I can't speak for this man, I don't know him, but what we're trying to craft is, we've got this building, we've got this use, and I'm hearing the proposal of what they wanna do. You all live in that neighborhood, I am, I am concerned about what's going on there. I listened to this gentleman, yes, as a law office, yes, as a chiropractor, things are happening. But the way it's zoned, they can do this activity. Now, how do we, how do we accommodate the neighborhood to allow this business to continue or operate with minimal amount of impact to the neighborhood? If it can be done, we're gonna try getting some conditions to do it. If it can't be done, then the proposal's gonna be dead. The man, I understand, as I'm looking at the petition, has already purchased the property.
That's correct.
He owns it. So, okay, that's kinda where we are. He needs to be a good neighbor. If he's not a good neighbor, boy, his restaurant is gonna die. He's gonna be living there. We talked about him living, anybody, he's got the, to open up a restaurant now, God love him.
No, we are, we are happy for this.
If I can respond to a couple more items.
New business in the city of Fall River. However, we are, we have been established there and to have some new things.
No, no, you live there, madam, you live there, this is your neighborhood. You know, I, we know where it is, we've been there, but I don't live there. But I wanna make sure that if the board grants that we've at least considered what's going on in your backyard. It's not gonna be something that we're gonna, you, but you have to understand, the zoning allows this activity. So how do we restrict it so it has a minimum impact on you? And on this gentleman. So, let me see what else, cause...
Okay, I, I have a few more items to address.
Go ahead, go ahead, answer, answer.
Just a couple others. First of all, I sat down with the Ferreras, we've gone through this. You can see that we've taken into many of what we anticipated, the concerns to be, into account on our plan. The Ferreras want every one of these neighbors to be their best customers, that will be there constantly coming into the restaurant. So we will do whatever we need to, and whatever limitations we need to put on ourselves, to make sure that we do still provide for that residential neighborhood around us, even though we're still in a business district. So with regards to the screen trees, it would be impossible for us to plant 12 to 14-foot arborvitae. The standard would be a 6-foot arborvitae, which is what we would be proposing, and site plan review would, would govern that. So there would be a vegetative screen along that entire property boundary of 6-foot arborvitae, spaced at 4 foot on center. That's the standard for any type of buffer screen that we would normally provide. And again, we would have liked to have been able to push the driveway even further west. However, I think, Ed'll tell ya, the first thing I told him when he came in is we need to provide this buffer screen, and we need to pull the pavement back. The existing curb cut's already there, so there's already a driveway there, we're just extending it back. So we minimize that as much as we could, so that we could provide that screen in anticipation of and with respect to the fact that we have a residential neighbor. I think that's answered the questions that the, that the abutters have raised. If you have any others, I'd be more than glad to answer them. And I do know that it is a lot in one application, however, I, I felt that it was better to be looked at as a whole rather than piecemeal.
Oh, it's, it's better that we get it done this way?
I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am?
Sorry, I just, again, it's my neighborhood, I'm trying to protect what's mine. So in regards to the vegetation, I disagree, and we feel that the possibility to put these arborvitae in that area is, um, false, because in our backyard, we have 12 to 14-foot arborvitae to provide privacy for our backyard. And my husband is, uh, in the landscaping field, and he can definitely provide some points to the board as to, um, how the restaurant can accommodate our request.
Alright, let me answer that. That, that whole issue about the type, and that will be handled if it's granted in site plan review. And I think they'll be happy to listen to your husband if he's in the, the business, but I think that's kinda beyond the scope of what this board, uh, we can say we want a vegetative border. The, the standard, and what I'm hearing from Mr. Aguirre, the standard is 6 foot, 4 feet apart, uh, to let them grow, but...
They'll get to 12 feet quickly.
No, no, but, but it, it's not something for this board to...
That's correct.
That, that's really something for the site plan review to deal with. Understand, if we grant it, we, so we say, we're gonna grant, so we want a vegetative border. So the site plan review will have to listen to that condition and determine how they're going to do the vegetative border. My recollection is when, I don't know whether or not the neighbors are invited to site plan review, but if it is granted, we could, Brittany, I hate to give you more work, but we got their name and number, we can let them know when site plan, because we're not even sitting down in a review anymore.
It's not a meeting.
It's not a meeting, it was just going through. They can submit a letter.
They, they should submit a letter prior to, if the board does grant, um, the relief, uh, in anticipation of it, and ask the, the city planner, Bill Kenny, um, to make sure that he addresses this, and these are his concerns. He'll see what the minutes were of the meeting.
Yeah, no, no, but I just wanna make sure that they, that if it's granted, they have an avenue of putting their input into it. That's all. No, that, that's, that's fine. Alright. Is there anyone else? Dan, I think you've hit on all the, the topics that were raised. Carolyn's issue is still an issue, I think, about the size of allocated to the two family. But I don't know whether she's had a chance to think about anything else on that, or any questions about it. And if not, Joe, anything on your end? Dan?
One of the things that just stands out, I'm looking at the three parking spaces to the rear, there's one way in, one way out. Somebody's gonna pull in there, everything's gonna be full, they're gonna be backing out onto the, onto the side street.
Onto Miller Street.
And I realize that that's probably a site plan issue, but it, it just kinda screams at me.
Well, again, that's why I had said that makes sense that those are employee spaces, and that once the employees are parked in there, or there can be signage put along the existing curb cut, employee parking only, or non-authorized entrance, you know?
Dead parking, employees get their, spend their...
All site plan review things, but yes, 100%, that's how I would do this, is that that area would be closed off and not open for normal traffic. And that'll keep the in-and-out traffic adjacent to the residential use at a minimum as well. People will come in once, they're gonna leave at the end of their eight-hour shift.
Okay. Joe, anything else?
No, nothing.
That was a good observation. Dan, no? Carolyn? No? Jim? Okay. So we've heard, sir, you had your hand up, oh...
Yeah, I have the, the point that he brought up, there's one way in, one way out. You have the same issue with that little square parking lot on Stafford Road. If they're gonna use that to make delivery, they'll have the delivery trucks pull in and back them right on onto Stafford Road, which is constant.
No, I got it, but, but if the board, but if the board conditions no parking on Stafford Road or Miller Street, that's up to him to deal with his delivery service.
I just, you know, I agree with it, it's the same thing on Stafford Road, only worse.
Okay, one minute, yes, sir?
Can I just, uh, answer, uh, sorry, I'm actually the designer of the property, and, uh, we specifically put a, an access door in the back parking area off the kitchen to allow for all the, um, deliveries to go on through the back and enter right into the kitchen, so I do...
Can I have your name, please, sir?
Uh, Virgil Pachicas. So I think Mr. Ferrer's, you know, intentions are to have all the deliveries through the back.
Through the back, not through, off Miller Street, coming up, okay. Okay, that's a good answer, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, good, I'll...
Do you mean to the back, to the, to the, the pockets, the little, the little tree spaces on Miller Street? They're gonna pull in there and deliver into the back, is that what you're saying?
Well, there's two lanes that Mr. Aguirre has mentioned that lead to the back parking lot area, and the access to the kitchen is directly off those parking spaces.
Two lanes to where?
24 wide.
I don't have a picture, so I'm, I'm trying to picture.
It's 20 feet wide.
It's 20 feet wide, it's as wide as a city street.
The, the driveway behind the building?
Yeah, behind the building, what they're, what they're talking about, the tree parking spaces.
It's 20 feet wide.
Right, well, that's where he's talking about pulling in to deliver.
Yeah.
So you're pulling, so you're pulling in and you're pulling out onto Miller Street?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
I'm just gonna visualize that, so he's gonna back up his, so essentially what you're telling us that he's to back up his delivery truck into that narrow space?
I don't know how he's gonna deliver, but that's...
I don't, I don't see any other way.
Yeah, either back in or back out, one of, one of the other.
Back up into that space.
Depends on how big it is, if it's one of those Andrews things, they got a little...
Well, most likely back in, from, from what I understand.
Yeah, most likely, yeah, but I don't know. Okay.
Is it an issue if they come through the front? I mean, I, I don't know, I don't know.
No, I mean...
No, no, I'm not making, listen, it's not an issue, it's just your neighbors are concerned, we're trying to address what's, how it's going to work. You're going to be there, you're changing what's happening there. You can do the restaurant as a matter of right, now, how does it affect everybody around you? These people have lived there, they're concerned about this new activity that didn't exist. So we're just trying to figure out what the details are, and try to have site plan review. If it gets granted, deal with it. If we deny it, I don't know what you're gonna do, sir. So, uh, okay, that's the end of any public input. Members of the board, motion to grant, motion to deny, any further discussion on, you wanna hear from anyone? Let's move it along. Hello?
I don't, I don't assist this, unless...
Okay.
I just have one question.
No, who, who's, who's talking?
Me.
Joe?
If we, if we didn't separate, if we didn't change the separation of the lot lines, could they just, by right, pull this permit?
Yeah?
Yes, without the, the proposed addition in the rear, and the rear parking, yes. Well, even, even the parking, we could, 'cause we could do that through an easement.
You, you can do lots of...
But it, it would, it just creates a logistical nightmare, and it's not the right way to do it.
Understood, but you understand why I asked the question.
So we do not, we do nothing, he can operate.
Right. Right, which is, which is why I asked the question.
That's, yeah, no, that's a very good observation. We do nothing, he doesn't have it, he owns everything, he can do what he wants to do. So, anything else? Okay, motion to grant, motion to deny. If we grant, we have those, we should be thinking about conditions. If we deny, then it's over.
I move that we grant conditional upon vegetative border. Let's see, what were the other things that we...
Hours of operation?
Hours of operation, deliveries, uh, to be made in the off-hours, or between 8 and 11.
8 and 11, deliveries, only on premises?
On purpose, yeah, on prop, no, no off-street parking for delivery.
No off-street deliveries?
Yeah.
No off-street deliveries? Hours of operation Friday?
No on-street deliveries.
No on, what did I say, off-street?
Off-street.
No on-street, no on-street deliveries, I'm sorry.
Hours of operation.
Sunday through Thursday, 11 a.m. to 8 p.m. Friday and Saturday, 11 a.m. to 9 p.m. That the property lines be adjusted? That that was...
Well, that, I mean, that's what the petition is.
But those are the conditions.
Yeah.
Do, signage will be in accordance with the BL district?
With the BL district, sure.
So we don't have to deal with that? What else did I write down? Trucks, parking, well, site plan review.
Yeah, that's automatic, yeah.
No, but just, just to make sure, site plan review. Okay. Anything else? So that's Jim's car, that's Jim Corkins' motion. Do we have a second on the motion?
Well, second?
Second, Joe Pereira, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Jim Corkins, yes. Joe Pereira, yes. Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Yes. Carolyn Marasat?
No.
No. Jim and Asad? Yes, let's see how it works out. Uh, so the vote is 4 to 1. Carolyn Marasat, no. Everyone else, yes. Those are the conditions. The, the only other piece that I wanted is if, if you can give or get your, your name, uh, so we can get it to Brittany, uh, so you should write a letter, or let Bill Kenny, the director of planning for the city of Fall River, know that you're interested in what your concerns are for site plan review. Oh, okay, so you know each other, very good.
But it was in the variance, do we not have to request a special permit?
You could do the se, yeah, if you want to both separately.
Thank you very much, Carolyn. Yes, let's deal with the special, I'm sorry. So that takes care of the variance part, right? So the special permit part?
Two special permits.
The expansion of the pre-existing building to, for the proposed addition? And what was the other piece, the entryway, the 10 by 10?
The special, well, yeah, there, there were, all, all of the additions would be through special permit, and then the other special permit would be with regards to the off-street parking.
Okay.
To allow for parking offset.
So the finding, the finding, so the special permit would be, um, for the additions, because we have an expansion of a pre-existing, non-conforming structure. So the determination has to be, is that structure more detrimental to the neighborhood than what exists? And the off-street parking, under the, under our ordinance, it allows us to grant these special permits to waive the requirements of Article 6, Division 1 of the bylaws. So, having, do we have a, is there any discussion on the special permit part of this? And the special permit, well, not that it really matters, it'll be for two years, the variance would be for one year. Can I get a motion to grant the special permit, the finding that the, um, special permit, the additions and the parking will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use?
I so move that we find that it is not more detrimental, as it does not encroach upon the other boundaries of, of residents.
So Jim Corkins, make a motion for the grant of the special permit. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Who's that? Dan? Dan Dupere seconds the motion, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Jim? Joe? Dan? Carolyn? No? Chairman Asad, yes? Okay. So, and the special permit is granted? Two-year grant for the special, not that it really matters, but the two-year grant for the special permit, one year for the variance. Okay, thank you, Carolyn, that was a good catch. Thank you. That was agenda item number three, right?
Right, I thought this would be a short meeting.
Okay. Agenda item number four. Antonio and Maria Diolinda Baretto, 237 William Street, Lot G412. Special permit request to Section 86, 466, to construct a 37-by-21 carport, waiving all requirements in the A2 multifamily district, lot size 3,200 plus or minus square feet. Can you take your conversation outside, please? Thank you. And, and just open it, we've got a, we have a side neighborhood, do not oppose. Okay.
Ray?
Yes?
Good evening again, for the record, Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Antonio and Maria Diolinda Baretto. Attorney Kevin Baretto is a friend of mine, these are, is the real estate that his parents own at the intersection of William Street and Broadway. Currently an existing three-family dwelling with an off-street parking area that is over an existing concrete surface that you see in the photo that I've shown you, as well as illustrated on the plan as well. As you can see, um, this is a fairly congested area, and the Barettos, um, as they are aging, rely on off-street parking, uh, quite a bit for this existing three-family dwelling. Additionally, you can see in that photo where the entrances are to the building, where you have to wrap around the, uh, the front of the structure. The Barettos would like to construct a carport. Carports normally bring us into the same provisions as garages and things in that nature under 86, 466. So what we have is a limited area with an existing curb cut that will allow for, uh, a proposed carport to be constructed. They came to me and asked me, you know, this is the size carport we wanna put in, we park cars side by side, one in front of the other, for a total of four spaces. So they wanted to try and get as much area covered as possible. So we went out, we did a survey, located the existing house, and we can fit, um, relatively easily, a 21-by-37-foot maximum-size carport. What that does is that puts the carport aligned with, they wanted to get right out to, to, to the front fence. I said, I think the best we're gonna be able to do is potentially the front line of the building. So what we did was we held...
Keeping in line, 4 feet.
We held, held that front line of the building.
Yep. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You had to tell them, yeah, go ahead. You had to tell them, go ahead.
So, what we did was we started at the front bump-out where the entrance is, where there's an existing sidewalk that you can see runs through that parking area, down a couple of steps, back to the steps to the front of the house.
All right, just tell them, tell them to move down, please, or in the atrium or something. Excuse me, just... Thank you, Brittany, go ahead, please.
Okay, so, we, we proposed the, the carport to start at the, the front line of the existing structure. To be able to park two vehicles underneath it, we would need, you know, a minimum space of 20 feet, opening doors and the structure itself. We proposed 21 feet in width, so that we could get, you know, the, the two vehicles in there, and still allow for posts to be at the exterior sides of, of the carport. And then, two vehicles deep, technically, we should be at 38 to 40 feet, stacking two vehicles in front of each other, 20-foot spaces. I think the best we can do is 37. And the reasoning for this sizing is that I felt that it was appropriate not to be any closer than the required four-foot setback to the abutting property lines. As you see in the photo, there is an existing fence to that side and to the rear that adds for the, the normal screening and the normal dividing of the property. So, we would be two feet off of, off of the property lines on that side and on that rear, where four feet is normally required. So, under that special permit provision of 86-466, that would be one special permit that we would need with regards to that. So, a reduction of the four down to two. Additionally, because of the location of the home and the narrow space that we have to work with, we cannot provide the six-foot setback to the existing structure. So, this structure will not be structurally dependent upon the three-family. However, it will not be offset six feet from the building as 86...
It's not connected, it won't be connected.
466, correct.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a roof supported by posts.
That's correct. And then, the, the size of it, again, being proposed as 37...
By 21.
By 21, which I think puts us just above the allowable 750 square feet, but fairly close to it. Again, this would not be a garage, will not have doors, strictly so that the, that the owners could have their vehicles parked somewhere where they're not covered in snow every day when they get out. On-street parking is impossible, you know how that is, especially in this area with shoveling, and this will allow them to, to create a parking space for four vehicles. I know, I know in the past, we've had a few petitions before you with regards to some carports closer to property lines than this, and when I made it very clear to the Barettos when they came to me is that every time we've, we've done this, it seems like every one of them is something that somebody's already built. So, I said, well, at least it's good that you didn't do that. I said, but secondary to that, also every one of those is that we've had strong neighboring opposition to having one of these carports that close to the property line.
In this particular petition, we don't, we've got it signed by.
Correct, and so what I, I made it very clear to Attorney Baretto that you need to go and approach the neighbors, which they've all been there for a very long time with each other, and make sure that you've garnered their support, before we even file. So, he had shopped around a plan to them before, then, once we did file, he brought them the final plan and had them all sign in support of it.
Yeah, if you don't have...
So, and then...
Can I give you this without violating anything?
And also, very important, is that the setbacks where we're asking for those reductions to the south, for instance, you're looking at the existing structure that's there, so it's not, you know, someone's porch, or there's some, nothing that we would be impeding on...
No, it's not like that last one, there was the wall, and you had the...
On their privacy, and you're on somebody else's driveway or on somebody else's yard. And then, the rear as well, that, after that lot line, if you know William Street, that, topographically, that really starts to dive down, and you can see all the lots behind us, that drops down, that backyard at 229 dramatically from our rear fence. So, that's all, I mean, it's, it's a special permit, asking to waive those requirements of 86-466, so that they could construct this carport and keep the snow off their vehicles.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, members of the board? Anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? And this is a special permit, so the finding has to be that it's substantial, it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's there. And the offsets, we have the authority in the 86-466 to grant it. Motion to grant, motion to deny?
Motion to grant, finding that it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and that the, I forget what, what else did we need to include?
No, that was all, the waiver of the, the side yards, the side dimensional require, and the square footage, my mathematics looked at 777.
Is that what it came up with?
21 by 37.
Don't ask me to do that in my head.
No, no, I had to do it longhand, but that's, so it's...
I was looking for my pen to do a longhand, and I said, I don't know if I could do that.
Okay, so, that's Jim Corkins' motion. Do we have a second on Jim's finding, motion for the finding? Okay, any discussion? So, we don't like that motion to grant, okay? Motion to deny?
I would make a motion to deny.
Who's that, Carolyn? Carolyn, motion to deny.
Could I, could I ask, would there be a dimension, or is there a dimension that you're concerned about, just 'cause you had no comment? Is this something that we could address?
It's just too tight, I think.
Well, right, so I'm, I'm asking you, you didn't ask a question specifically, where do you think it's too tight, and where could we move something so that we could leave with the permit, potentially?
The six feet from the start of the property, and then also the neighboring side, the two feet, I think, is too, too tight.
So, off of the, off of Broadway, you don't like the four? Is that what you mean?
Well, yeah, I think that's, it's too tight on the front and the side.
No, wait a minute, I think we're missing something.
Well, that's what I wanna, I wanna, 'cause I wanna be able to offer something, but I just wanna make sure.
So, it's in the same line as the house, you don't, you think it should be back further? No, I wanna be, I wanna be clear, because it's...
But I thought under the, the, it should be back further.
Yeah, yes, yes, it should, but that, the horizontal line, parallel to Broadway, I guess would be...
The projection of that front building line.
That horizontal line, it's in line with it.
I know it's in alignment, but it's still creating a vision of...
No, no, you're correct, Carolyn, I just wanted to be clear, I understood what you were saying, that's all.
But I'm only one person, so...
No, no, I, but if there's something we can do to accommodate your concerns, I, I would like the ability to do that.
So, if it was, so if it was shrunken, so give some new dimensions and see if that...
Right, so it's, it's the street line, and then the line to the southerly butter, is what you have concerns, or...
Well, you have it here, it's only two.
Two, correct, it's supposed to be four.
So, if...
So, maybe it's not four cars, but a smaller round of cars.
Well, if it was, it was four, it wouldn't need to be here, so can I propose three? Would that make you feel better? And then, we would have a 20-foot structure by 36. Sorry, and then, but you wanted, you want me to move the, the front off the street as well? Let's say 20 by 36.
Carolyn, do you have, right up against the house, you don't have a problem with that?
That's actually probably just allowed by, by permit, the, the projection of the existing non-conforming setback.
I, I got that, but I wanna make, listen, I wanna make sure that we're addressing what the concerns are, because I don't want it to either get denied or approved if it's not the right dimensions that the board is in. I'm just trying to wrap my head around, so you make it smaller, if you keep it in terms of what the ordinance for a garage has, what you end up with.
Well, no, the, the front setback, if it was a garage that didn't have a structure this close to the street, then it would be 20 feet.
That's correct.
However, we can extend, we could build this as an addition to the building and keep that front line by a matter of right. And then, just, if we're not getting any closer to a property line, that's, that's allowed by right. It's only when we're getting closer that we would need some type of relief.
Well, my perspective is that if you can do something by right, you should do it by right, and not come before the board.
But then, there would be no board.
No, 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 wait, Carolyn's got, you need relief, you wanna get it, just, I, I wanna be clear what it is, the dimensions that we need to, if there are some dimensions that will make it, so we can get a motion to grant or a motion to deny, instead of just, this is what's before the board. So, you're, you're trying to ask that question.
That's correct.
So, I'm trying to find out what that number is, or what... So, if you need the four-foot offsets, then what is that? That brings you down, so it's gonna be a total of four and four. 37 becomes 33, and the other one becomes 33, 21, 17, that's...
Not enough for two.
17 by 33, you get like one...
I mean, the, the three feet on, I mean, increasing the, the two to three and three, not, not a problem. I mean, we, we could live with that. That'll still get us two vehicles wide. Getting shorter than 36 will not allow for two vehicles to be stacked. So, we, so we can definitely shorten up the back to go from two to the three, and that'll give us 36, but that's still withholding the four.
So, the side yard at three gets us down to...
Both side and rear to three.
18.
Gets us, both side and rear down to three, gives us a 20 by 36 structure, keeping the four-foot front.
Yeah, no, I got the four-foot, but how are you getting, if you got 20-foot wide in there?
I'm 21 right now.
Oh, you're going an extra foot, I got 20, yes, uh, got it, got it. Okay.
So, it would basically, it would be a one-foot reduction on the side and the rear, and the front would be matching the existing non-conforming.
So, the rear and side would go from two to three.
Correct.
So, that goes by 20 by 36.
Correct, I don't know what that square footage is, but...
I don't know, but it's, all right, so is your motion to, are you making a motion for the board to consider a...
Yes.
Reduction in the size with the three, three-foot side and rear yard?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, can I ask a question?
Yeah, Joe.
Is, is four feet right off the table?
We wouldn't need to be here if it was four.
Well, I realize that, we wouldn't be here.
Well, what happens is if it, if it's four, we can't fit two vehicles, side by side, in that driveway, and that's, we don't wanna create less off-street parking than what's there now, and as you can see, it's all used for off-street parking now, it's a, a concrete surface, fence to building, and they put that there so that they can have the off-street parking.
I, I also realize that in a lot of other jurisdictions, this would be a double variance that you're looking for, and I realize it, that, that's not why you're here, but that hardship would be awfully hard to prove. And I can't get it out of my head, again, we just keep packing more and more and more onto small lots, it just bugs me.
No, but, but this...
If we can do something by right, I have to agree with my colleague, my colleague Carolyn, why can't we do it by right? And I understand...
But this section of zoning specifically allows for these types of reductions, for you to hear them, under 86-466, with these requirements.
As a special permit.
As a special permit, so there is no hardship to be shown.
No, I, I understand.
We're dealing with the Fall River zoning bylaw.
Yeah, I know.
And, and that allows us to come for you specifically for these reasons in a circumstance like this, and again, if it was only, if they were only gonna fit one vehicle, so if it would be the difference between 12 and 10, and it was only gonna be on eight, 17 and 10, that's still only gonna be one vehicle wide. So, so that, then there would be no argument, but, but to get to the two, we would really need to be at a minimum of 20, because we also have to accommodate the posts within that 20-foot limit, so that's shrinking up. Normal parking spaces are nine feet at a minimum, so that's nine and nine, and then now we have a post on each, each outside of that, so...
So, the standard under 86-466 is the zoning board may grant a special permit for the construction of a garage or shed, and I, we're making the analogy that a carport is something like that.
The building department has made that assumption.
In excess of the, of the maximum size, provided the board finds that the scale of the proposed structure is consistent with neighboring structures, and that the proposed structure will not impact the use and enjoyment of the abutting properties. So, that's the standard, so if Carolyn feels that that doesn't work, then it, it doesn't make it to, let's have a vote on... And if that's the same way Joe feels, then that's, that's it, let's just say it's denied, and it doesn't fit into it, and that's...
And if we had, and if we...
As a matter of right, if one car doesn't work, or you can do it as a matter of right, that's fine. The two car, if it doesn't pass the muster of the board, then it doesn't work. I mean, it, it seems dumb to get a grant for something that you're not gonna be able to use.
And the, I mean, clearly in that provision, when you have notice from all of the abutters that are affected, they're, they're clearly saying that they won't be affected, and that they propose, and that they're in...
Okay, so, you, you wanna change, you wanna try pitching a 20 by 36?
20 by 36 with three and three.
Three and three, okay. So, let's deal, let's deal with Dan's motion first. Do we, do we have a motion to accept the reduction in what's being proposed in the petition from, come on, baby, where is it? From 21 by 37, 37 by 21, down to 20 by 36? Motion to allow that change in the petition?
I would make a motion to allow that change.
All right, so Carolyn makes a motion to allow the change. Second by Jim Corkins, all those in favor? Joe, yes, Dan, Carolyn?
Yes.
Jim Corkins and Assad. So, now, what's before the board is a special permit for a 20 by 36-sized carport with the side and rear yard, three-foot minimum.
Correct.
And that's what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what's before the board. Can we get a motion to grant the finding for the special permit that says... I should've left it open.
The scale of the proposed structure is consistent with neighboring structures.
Correct.
And that the proposed structure will not impact the use and enjoyment of the abutting property.
Thank you, that's 86-466, last sentence. So, if somebody wants to make that motion, that's fine. If you don't think it does it, then let's have a motion to deny.
I would make a motion to grant.
All right, so we get a motion to grant from Carolyn. We have a second?
No, second.
Second, Jim Corkins, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Jim Corkins, Joe?
Yes.
Yes, Dan Dupaire?
Yes.
Yes, Carolyn, yes? Chairman Assad, yes? Okay, so, your special permit for 20 by 36, three-foot minimum.
And the Baretto's, thank you, snow's coming.
No, I mean, that's, it's good that we talked it through. Okay, agenda item number five. Louis Amadeus, Louise Amadeus, 123 Cobal Street, Lot L375. Special permit request pursuant to Section 86-423B to subdivide 3,828 plus or minus square feet parcel into two lots leaving an existing dwelling on each in the G District.
Good evening, for the record, Dan Aguiar of SciTech Engineering. We're here this evening on behalf of Louise Amadeus, who is here this evening. He is the property owner of the real estate located at 123 Cobal Street and 224, sorry, 224 Doyle, map L375. This petition, and you will see in your package, we, we are proposing to move this as a normal special permit under 86-423B for subdividing the two parcels, sorry, subdividing the parcel with two structures that have been in existence prior to 1954. This, this request was actually granted via variance, and that's the last sheet in your package, you should see, and again, this was before Chairman Assad and I discovered that we could be doing these all by special permit much easier. So, the variance was granted, however, as in the first application this evening, never followed through with, so that variance is thrown out the window, but this is previously approved through that process. Luckily, we do have a process now that allows this to happen as a special permit, and much easier to deal with. So, nothing is changing on the property, other than creating this interior lot line. There is a shared area in between the, the structures that is utilized for parking, trash collection, most of the parking does occur on the street. We do understand that utilities would need to be separate, which I believe is already done, and that an affidavit would be recorded, stating such, prior to any conveyance of, of either of the parcels. So, rather straightforward, two little squares, not changing anything other than creating the interior lot line. And a normal provision of no interior fence, we're not opposed to that as well, says to provide emergency access, you know, in between the two buildings.
We granted this the first meeting when I was appointed to...
Is that right?
Yeah, this was the one where we were here till midnight, oh, 1:00 o'clock, yeah. I'm just looking at the date, January 24, 2008, that, the agenda was like 24 items and we were here till, 'cause I'm looking, I'm saying, Assad signed this thing, wasn't I? Okay. So, but under, under the current provision, you've got two buildings on one lot, we wanna split them, each one parcel, one parcel two. So, is there anyone, members of the board, any questions on this particular petition? Carolyn? Joe?
No, sir.
Dan? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
Motion to grant.
Motion to grant, Jim Corkins, do I have a second? Is that... Is that Joe? Joe Pereira, second, any discussion on the motion?
I just wanted to condition no fencing.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, your motion, amend your motion.
That's fine, yep.
No fencing. Okay, and the affidavit needs to be.
Affidavit needs to be recorded at the registry of deeds within one year or prior to the conveyance that the utilities haven't separated. They're telling me that they're already separated.
Two-year grant, right?
Two-year, yeah.
Standard now?
Standard, two-year grant.
Okay, so that's Jim's amended motion, that's seconded by Joe. Thank you, Carolyn, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Assad, yes?
Yes.
Jim Corkins, yes, okay, so that petition is granted.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay. Everybody good, we're going forward. Agenda item number six. David Nigwen, care of Peter Salino Esquire, eight forty-six Brayton Avenue, Lot F four twenty. This is a variance request to use and operate property as a manufacturing facility in the BL District in which bedding, mattresses, and uniforms are made, manufactured and or sewn. Good evening, Attorney Salino, will you identify yourself for the record, please?
Certainly, for purposes of the record, my name is Peter Salino. I maintain a law office at five fifty Locust Street here in Fall River. With me this evening is David Nguyen, who is the applicant for tonight's petition. For purposes of a brief introduction, this is the former Sam's Club property on Brayton Avenue. Depending on which city record you look at, sometimes it's referred to as Grinnell Street, but ultimately, it's the Sam's Club building. The, when you look at the zoning map in what Chairman Assad calls the grapefruit-colored bound and reliable paper copy of the zoning ordinance, you'll notice that this site is the only one in its general region that is zone BL. Everything else around it is industrial. That was done to support the Walmart project there. And so now, Mr. Nguyen has a purchase and sale agreement to buy the Sam's Club building, but he needs to relocate his operation from Quarry Street to this location. And as such, what our variance petition is seeking is effectively a change of use that would allow him to run his manufacturing operation out of Sam's Club as opposed to his current mill on Quarry Street. The proposal, or as Chairman Assad read in the public notice, is manufacturing bedding, mattresses, and uniforms. He makes all these things in Fall River and then distributes them throughout the United States. And as far as the hardship, I think the structure itself is really the hardship here. It's there, it's not going anywhere. I think big-box stores probably are a thing of the past, given everything that's gone on in online retailing. So I think this is a very suitable building for a very suitable use in Fall River. The proposal is that he would move to that building, which would allow him to expand his operations significantly on a daily output basis. The additional employees are close to a hundred, he figures he could hire. I'll let him speak a little bit to, you know, rates and hourly pay, et cetera, because I think it's important to the overall kind of rubric of the decision. But as far as why I don't think this is a detrimental proposal, obviously, there's a signalized intersection there, and it was built for Sam's Club. Ample parking on and off the highway right there, so I think that's perfect for trucking perspective. I don't think this derogates from the intent of the bylaw. We're focused on grouping like uses and the most appropriate use of land. I think that particular site is well-suited for this. I think it was industrial. And so we're looking to change that back to allow Mr. Nguyen to operate at that site. And if I could just, I know the speech about the purview of the Zoning Board of Appeals, but if I may allow him just to speak to his operation, please?
Yes.
All right, so David, speak to your operation. What do you do, who you are?
Good evening, my name is David Nguyen. I'm the owner of ZU S Bedding. And in two thousand and six, I moved my business from Boston to Fall River. And my business is now, is growing. And I just take very short time to, so I can do everybody a lot of time here. But the business, I love the city. I want to stay in Fall River. Even I have an offer from, you know, Rhode Island and North Carolina to move my business there. But I do love this city, and I can grow the business. I can triple my business now. But the location where I am not allow me to doing that. I could not invest in the machinery or, you know, everything I need to grow the business. I have a group of very, very nice people working with me, and then it allowed me to expand my business. And if I able to move to Sam's Club, I think I can triple my business. Right now, I have thirty-six people working with me, so it can bring me to like a hundred people working. Talking about the pay, I start with training. I can bring anybody from knowing nothing about the business, can start training, and I'll start training and pay fourteen dollars up to thirty dollars, depending on the skill that people working. So, you know, I hope you grant me what I need to do so I can able to move my business there and then.
All right, very good, David, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just would have a question.
Sure, Mr. Corkins.
Do we need to limit it to just those items? What if he later develops that he wants to, same techniques, same machinery, but manufacture something slightly different than these? And then, can we make it a more general?
I have no.
Well, you can make the motion just to manufacturing.
Yeah, I have no objection to that.
I just wondered if that's consistent with your request.
Yes.
My only concern about changing it is that it was advertised and just.
No, no, what it says is, the petition says, as a manufacturing facility, and then you've got in which bedding, mattresses, and uniforms are made manufactured and or sewn. But you've got the, I would make the argument that we asked about manufacturing, this is what they're doing, but if we're turning that space into a manufacturing facility, do we need to limit it? We can just say for manufacturing.
Yeah, I, that's the thing that bothered.
But I don't, I don't know whether that was Carolyn that said something. It gets distorted through the glass. Okay.
So I have nothing further, I'm happy to entertain any questions, if there's questions about the operation?
Javi Freeman wrote a lovely letter to the board.
At my urging, because.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
So my only question is, will we buying it, or are we under a long-term lease on the building?
No, David is buying it, and to get a piece of paper signed by Walmart turns out to be kind of a big undertaking. So I asked Mr. Freeman.
So that's going to be a sale, and this is where.
Yes, David is the buyer, and we're talking to a local bank with the name Fall River on it.
But he's not getting the gas station.
I think it's part of that deed, when you look at the original A and R.
So you're getting the gas station?
Yes.
Oh, so this lot by itself, F four twenty, includes everything that's there?
That's right.
Okay. Okay. Now, that was my question, I just want, yes, ma'am? Who's?
Hi, Ms. Pereira.
Councilor Pereira, I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you better.
I know, I can't recognize you either. I just want to add my support.
Madam, you're far enough away, take that mask off so we can get.
I just want to add my support. I've known David for several years now. Not only does he make mattresses, but the uniforms that he makes there are for all of police and fire, Miami-Dade, Louisiana, New York Police and Fire. All uniforms are made there, TSA, US Customs. He does a remarkable job. The women that work in the sewing industry and the men that are up there absolutely admire him as an employer, as do most of the people downstairs working on mattresses. He also does over a million MyPillows here in Fall River and MyPillow Toppers. It's a four-story building. When he purchased the building on Quarry Street, he invested in it. The building is very sound, so he's not somebody who would let something fall apart. He really takes pride. And what admires me most, David was offered a building in the Carolinas for free just to bring his manufacturing plant down there. And he chose to stay in Fall River because Fall River's been good to him, and he loves the people there. And if we had more businessmen like this, who really, he has such a strong commitment to Fall River, I think it would be wonderful to allow this because now he would be just on one floor, which would be a lot less work for him and the rest of his employees. And the fact that he's going to be looking to hire a hundred more people, we can certainly use jobs.
I think it's Mr. Fiola, so he's gonna be happy about that.
Yeah, we're thrilled about it. You know, expansions like this during a pandemic don't usually happen. It was a lot of work to get the Sam's Club. Luckily, David knew someone who knew somebody who worked for the Walmart Corporation and kind of got that bull rolling, so things worked out well. And I certainly hope that he goes forward with this, with this project.
Thank you, Councilor Pereira.
So I would request a favorable decision by the board. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Fiola, you here just as an observer, or do you have something to contribute?
For the record, I'd just like to contribute our support for the project. We've been working with David for the last four months on this particular issue. Obviously, negotiating with Walmart is full of trials and tribulations, but we actually got it to the point now where we actually have a signed PNS, which is contingent upon the variance. The variance is necessary so as to allow him to manufacture at the site. Absent the variance, the project does not move forward. David's stuck at Quarry Street, and then he's gonna be forced to look at his options elsewhere. We would like to keep this business in the city. We think it's not only good for the city in terms of the growth that ZU S Bedding and its affiliated companies will be offering, but it's also a reuse of a vacant building on Brayton Avenue, which has sat idly for a number of years. We don't think that there's a detriment to the surrounding neighborhoods. We think that the use is conducive to the types of uses we want to see moving forward. And we are going to be working with him to secure additional incentives to help him facilitate his move and his purchase of equipment in the property itself so he can realize his goal of hiring those hundred people that he wants to hire. The demand for his product is through the roof. There's been a consolidation in the manufacturers of mattresses. In many ways, he's one of the last men standing in the Northeast, which is working to his advantage. But he's turning away work right now because he doesn't have the facility to accommodate the growth. With this new facility, that opens up additional growth opportunities. Personally, I think the projection of a hundred jobs is, might be a little conservative, but we don't want to overstate things at this point. But that facility allows him the room to not only manufacture his products more efficiently, but also allows him the room to grow as the market demands. So from our perspective, this is a win-win for everybody, and we hope that the board does grant this variance request. That's before tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Fiola. Mr. Sabre, anything you want to contribute?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a great use for the, for the building, it's been started for so many years, as Ken mentioned. It's a great economic development project. And I think it hits all the checkmarks that really the city needs right now, from jobs to the redevelopment of that site. David's a great guy, I've known him a short time, but put him in the mill almost on a daily basis, and everything that the council said about the workers and their respect for David is all true. He's a great guy, and somewhere that we can keep the good honors.
Thank you.
On the city.
Attorney Salino, can you address maybe what the material, the raw materials, are they gonna be stored outside? Are they gonna be fenced in? Are they gonna be all inside?
David will address, so operationally, David, how do you see that working out?
So the Sam's Club is big enough for me to bring all the material, everything, all the equipment inside the building. It's like a hundred forty thousand square feet.
So there's not gonna be anything, dumpsters or anything outside?
No.
Or storage outside?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, what's the impact on the, or what would happen with the gas station?
He owns it. If he's buying the lot, he's done.
If we change the zoning, can that operate under that zone?
Yes, that we granted, if you remember, we had granted a special permit for the operation of that gas. I don't know whether it's still in operation or not.
No, it's not. It's just a pad site.
Oh, they pull the tanks out?
There's no, there's not.
So none of my cousins are gonna go there and start pumping gas next?
No, they are not, no.
So it's not a factor?
Oh, so that takes care of that?
Right.
So if the tanks are out, and they would have had to deal with that, so it's there, and it's no longer there because it was granted by a special permit that he's not pumping gas. And that lady next door that was concerned about it has.
So the permit would, I mean, the special permit would have expired anyway?
It elapsed, yeah, right.
Yeah, no, but it, just in turn, they want it to come back, redo something. But if it doesn't exist anymore, then it's not there.
Okay.
Okay. Joe, any questions? Go. One question, I think I already know the answer to it, for the record. No smoke, no dust, no emissions, no noise that will come out of the facility that would disturb neighbors? Is that a correct assumption?
Yes, no, nothing like that.
Everything's totally self-contained, nothing outside?
Yes.
I think the only neighbor is to the west, and it's, there, my recollection on this lot, there was that vegetative border and a fence that we made them put in to keep that away, yeah. And to the east is, I think, Ledge and the pond.
Ledge and the pond and the highway, yeah.
Anything else, Joe?
We're gonna get in the quarry business.
Dan? Anything? Carolyn?
No.
Jim?
No.
Okay, so is anyone here in favor? We heard from everybody in favor, no one opposed? Oh, there's a letter somewhere. Let's see.
The orange letters.
Orange. So that's from Javi. And then this one, members, this is signed by Mayor Paul E. Coogan, Mayor. Dated October ninth, two thousand and twenty. Dear Zoning Board of Appeals members, I am writing to encourage you to give serious consideration to approving the petition of David Nigwen for a variance to use the former Sam's Club property at eight forty-six Brayton Avenue as a new location for his company, ZU S Bedding, engaging in light manufacturing of bedding, mattresses, pillows, and uniforms. If this variance is approved, United States, ZU S Bedding will be able to relocate from an old three-story traditional Fall River mill building to a much newer, larger, and more efficient one-story facility, making possible expansion from twenty-nine to a projected one hundred jobs for our city with virtually no detrimental impact on the existing neighborhood. Further, it will advance one of the most important purposes of our city's zoning ordinances, encouraging the most appropriate use of land through the city. This proposal will bring new life to a building that has been vacant for over five years in which, if limited to its former retail use, may face an uncertain future, given the decline in popularity of big-box stores. In view of its perfect suitability to light manufacturing, this is an opportunity for repurposing an existing building that we should not pass by. Thank you for your consideration, sincerely, Paul E. Coogan, Mayor. There is, let's see, staff memo. That was just built to us, but I'm not gonna read that in.
Can you just address the hours of operation? Is that something we need to put in?
Go ahead, ask him. Tell me about the hours of operation.
Sure, so his ideal operation is six days a week, Monday through Saturday, seven to seven.
Okay. Does that work for you, Carolyn?
Yeah. I just want to make certain it's recorded.
Okay. Monday through Saturday, seven AM to seven PM?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, motion to grant, motion to deny? Mr. Corkins, motion to grant?
Move that we grant the change in zoning to.
No, it's not change in zoning, we're granting him a variance.
A variance to permit manufacturing at the facility.
Okay. So Jim Corkins' motion is grant the variance for manufacturing at this facility. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Who is that? Dan Dupere, second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Joe, yes. Dan, yes. Carolyn?
Yes.
Yes. Jim Corkins, yes. Chairman Assad, yes. That petition is granted. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nice presentation, Mr. Sabre.
You want?
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Alcun, David. Thank you, man. Thank you, ma'am.